It is 6:30 PM. It is time to convene our joint session of the Town and Trophy Club and Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One. At this time, I will see that we have a quorum and all council members are present, and I'll turn the meeting over to President Wilson for him to start his meeting.
Okay, calling the order Trophy Club MUD 1. It is 6:31, and we have a quorum with all directors here. Turn it back over to the mayor.
All right, thank you. Item number one for both of us is consider and take appropriate action regarding the Fire Protection Services Fiscal Year 2019 budget, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief Carroll for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Director, President and Directors. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to go briefly over the Fire Department budget, answer any questions that you might have, and move forward from there with, like I said, any questions that you would have at the end of the night. I'm going to start out by going through the debt service that we currently have for the Fire Department and what revenues we project for the, for next year. All right, if you're looking through the Fire Department's outstanding debt, we have three main areas of debt. One is the fire station, which was completed in 2012. It's scheduled to be paid off in 2031. The remaining debt is 1.97 million. We're making $150,000 a year payments. And then we have a second debt is the truck. Truck 681 was purchased in 2015. It's scheduled to be paid off in 2022. The remaining debt on that is a little over $500,000 with payments of 127 a year. The final debt that we have in the Fire Department is the payment to MUD 1 reserves, or MUD 2 reserves, actually. When the muds combined, MUD 2 paid a cash payment towards the building of the Fire Department's fire station, and this is a payment back to the MUD reserves at $68,096 a year. Revenues projected for FY19 really are focused around the Fire Marshal's office. We do fire inspections, we do plan reviews, and all of that is tied into the fire permit. We restructured the fee schedule this last year. We looked at 12 area cities around us, and we came to the mean, and we looked at charging the mean average there of those 12 cities and made that our new fee schedule for the Fire Department. In the past, we had not collected any fees or assessed any fees through the Fire Department. This new fee schedule, we estimate that the construction of PD-30 is going to create a revenue of about $195,000. That's a conservative projection, and that's for all the buildings there within PD-30. All right, FY19, the overall budget that's being requested is $1,373,174. This comprised of both the personnel side of the house and the services side of the house. On the personnel side, the total requested budget is 993,982. There are some major changes, and that's what I'd like to go over on each of these budgets, is really just the major changes from last year. So last year, we discussed a right sizing in many of the areas of the budget, including vehicle maintenance was a large area where we had never budgeted anything past annual PMs in vehicle maintenance, and that we included in the fuel costs, we included the annual PMs as well. We moved all that to the right areas, so we had some major adjustments last year in the budget to right-size and get to where we needed to be last year. This year is a continuation of that process, and what you're going to see is after last year's budget, I got hired, Mr. Class was nice enough to bring me on May the first, with the first goal being, hey, we need to get you a budget together by the end of June. So, after a year of being onboard, being able to look a little deeper at our needs and our weaknesses, we're able to come together with this budget here. The personnel side of the budget, you will see a major change in this personnel side of the budget, and the major changes there are the part-time fire marshal who will oversee the PD-30 and PD-25 projects. What we're hoping to get done here is we would want to see where in the past we've done, our fire inspections have been done by shift personnel, so every day you would see a different inspector out there who has a little different idea of what's supposed to be done. And we can all know that codes are subject to the interpretation at times, and these builders, these project managers, they really would need to have a sound, solid voice to that entire project so that there's fewer changes throughout the project from one person to another. This part-time inspector will, we propose, is working 20 hours a week. Depending on the project itself, it could increase to 30. We will not go over 30 hours a week just due to the need to give them benefits at that point. He will become a full-time employee versus a part-time employee. So this is a part-time employee, and as you saw from the projected revenues, the projected revenues would more than pay for this personnel. Other changes you're going to see on the personnel side is a full-year salary for me, as I said last year. We brought me on on May the first, so you will see the other half of my salary in this budget. You will also see a shared expense for the administrative assistant. This last year, the EMS side of the budget and the town manager's budget shared that administrative assistant piece, as some of her duties were with the town manager and some of the duties were helping us in the Fire Department. What we have now done is we've, she's got enough work within the Fire Department, is we've kind of reallocated a lot of her time, and now she's splitting her time really between EMS and between fire. So that means that half that budget's coming out of the town for the EMS budget, and the other half is coming from the MUD or the fire budget. Lastly, we have some change, some minor changes in the way we structured our holiday pay. In the years past, we paid out holiday pay at time and a half in the overtime budget. We are moving those expenses from overtime, so we're no longer paying that expense at time and a half, and it's going to straight time within the cycle, within the pay cycle that it's incurred. That means that just that pot of money has to move from that overtime budget into the salaries budget, which is part of the reason you're going to see this increase on the salary side. The other major change you're going to see in this budget is in overtime. So when I came onboard, one of the things we realized, talking with the finance department straight away, was that we had one large pot of overtime money. In the Fire Department, we work a different schedule, as you guys know, and FLSA, the Fair Labor Standards Act, requires that anybody that makes, that works over 40 hours in a one-week period gets paid overtime. Well, because the Fire Department works on average 56 hours a week, they understand that most people can't pay that 16 hours of overtime that's on that average. So the government has stated that within that each pay period, which is a two-week pay cycle, that six hours of overtime is mandatory that we pay these guys in order to compensate them for that extra hours worked, right? So that 56 hours that they're working a week, they're actually only getting six hours of that in overtime money every other week. So this became a problem for us because we're looking at a big pot of money that was the overtime budget, and now I needed to really see what do I have to run the business, the operational piece of overtime need, versus the have-to-pays on the FLSA side. So with the help of finance, we were able to split that out and track that this year. So what we've seen now is that out of my budgeted money last year, $84,000 of that is mandatory FLSA pay money. So that makes my pot very, very small in order to get the operations piece completed. If you look at the accrued leave that firefighters get every single year, there's 16 of those guys, or 16 counting Anita. The accrued leave creates $16,000 worth of overtime. So if they're just taking the time off that they accrue, plus the FLSA, plus what little bit of training that we have there assigned out that causes overtime as well, the Fourth of July event, all of those total up to $112,563. The budgeted amount last year was $100,000. So you can see where it makes perfect sense that in years past, we're busting that budget year after year after year. I just need one sick firefighter, one person go off on FMLA, one bad injury, and we're significantly over that budget. So what I'm proposing is $150,000 overtime this next year, which would help us, give us that $34,831 for sick leave, FMLA, injured firefighters, mandatory meetings just to run your business, those kind of things. So that gives me $34,000 worth of operational overtime, not including these things that you see stacked before you. Other major changes in the submitted budget for personnel include a medical insurance increase. We put in this budget a 15% medical insurance increase this next year. We're hoping that that number comes back a little bit lower. We're waiting on final numbers to come back in through the HR department, but a conservative 15%, I think will cover us for sure. So we've got that in there, and then pre-employment physicals and annual testing has increased due to cancer screening. Two years ago, cancer became the number-one killer of firefighters. In the years past, it has always been heart attacks, and two years ago, cancer has become the number-one killer of active-duty firefighters, not just retirees, but actual active-duty firefighters. So with that significant increase, we are taking steps as an industry to ensure that we're testing these guys, make sure that we're making sure that we have the processes in place to ensure these guys are not getting cancer, or at least we're recognizing it early. And then lastly, we have an increase of $4,600 in the tuition reimbursement. We just have more firefighters that are interested in getting their education and furthering their knowledge and their careers. So I'm very proud of that fact, actually. I think it's a, it's a good sign that we have some good firefighters, good young firefighters that are looking to increase their knowledge and abilities. So that was the personnel side of the house. We can quickly look at the sales and services, or services and supplies, rather, side, and the total requested budget for this piece is $379,192. This is an increase of $136,000 over last year's budget, but 92,500 of it are one-time asks. So this is one-time supplemental requests for an exhaust reclamation system for the apparatus bay and half a set of extrication tools. The exhaust reclamation system for the apparatus bay, as we talked about earlier, so cancer is the number-one killer of firefighters. What we're learning through the industry and through the science behind the industry now is that we are not killing these firefighters because of this acute, at-the-structure-fire exposure to these harmful chemicals. We're doing it on the long-term basis, these daily operations that we have in place. So we go out every single morning, and you're checking your equipment. Our number-one job is to make response. Our number-two job is to be prepared to make that response, correct? So every day, they go out there and they check in their equipment. They're making, they're putting the engines through their paces, putting the pumps through their paces, making sure they have everything squared away and ready to go. Nothing has changed overnight between one shift or another, ready to make that response. During that time, they're having to run engines, they're having to check saws, all this equipment, and current, our current reclamation system for all that exhaust is inadequate. It was inadequate, honestly, when it was installed. It did not, it was not designed correctly for the amount of space that's in the bay. We actually moved the reclamation system that was in the old firehouse to the new firehouse, and we didn't even add any, even though our bay increased in size, we didn't add any further units to ensure that we were stirring that up. The other thing is behind this, the science behind how those systems that we have currently works, it's really an air scrubbing system, and there's units hanging from the ceiling and with fans on that's supposed to suck this exhaust up and into these units, scrub through filters, and then spit back out into the bay with clean air. The specific density of this exhaust, of these chemicals that are in the exhaust, is so close to air that this stuff is not rising up. You would have to fill the bay full of this stuff in order to get up to these units close enough to get sucked in and be filtered through. So that's the first issue, and really because of that, because you have such a great amount of exhaust before we have any of this cleaning taking place, we're getting to see great amounts of this exhaust in our bays. So we've been doing some air monitoring during our morning checks. So we have four gas meters that we're using, and just looking at the CO alone, the CO readings within the bay on a normal morning with the bay doors open while they're doing these morning checks is around 25 parts per million. At 40 parts per million, that's considered an IDLH environment where we would have to wear an SCBA. So 25 parts per million is getting to the point where we really should evacuate those bays. We have to ventilate them and then return to it. Inside the building, we're seeing readings as high as five parts per million. Five parts per million doesn't sound like a lot. Nine parts per million at your house, I wouldn't let you back in the house. By policy, I'd have to get you out. We'd have to ventilate the structure, we'd have to test it again to make sure that the structure was clean before we'd let you back in. So with numbers like that, you can see over a long period of time, we're exposing these guys to some very dangerous chemicals that they don't really need to be exposed to when there's ways to get that done, and this exhaust reclamation system does exactly that. It's a system that goes on to the tailpipe of the unit so that the unit can idle, and it's immediately sucked directly from the tailpipe into a hose system that's going to go up and ejected from the top of the building. This way, even when you're pulling into the bays, you stop with the nosier unit in the bay, you connect the system, and then you pull on into the bay the rest of the way. When you're leaving for a call, it's connected, it goes, when you leave for the call, it hits a magnetic unit that disconnects it and pulls off the unit, so you're not pulling it down the highway with you. But it's a great system, it's, and the cost of that's around $75,000. The other major purchase there to make up the 92.5 is half a set of extrication tools. Our current set of extrication tools, we have two. So you have a primary set and you have a backup set. Our backup set is 11 years old, and it is old enough now that it is not rated for the modern steels that they're using in automobiles. So if we were to have our new set that came with the fire truck, if we have our new set out of service for testing, or we just needed a second set, our second set of tools that we would have to bring to the scene, we could not pop a door, we could not roll a top, we could not rescue somebody from inside that vehicle on most vehicles. If it's an older vehicle, we could, but anything after about 2005, we'd be in trouble. We wouldn't be able to use that set of tools. So what we're asking for is to begin the replacement of that second set of tools and purchase half of that this year and half of it in the following year. All right, that was a lot of talking for $92,500, sorry. Other major changes that we're looking at is a truing up of our software and support budget, increased training and associated travel expenses. As I said before, after a year of being here, you really get a better understanding of where we are as a department, where we need to improve, and how to get that done. So we're looking at increasing our training, increasing our amount of live-fire training, and increasing the amount of certification training that we're sending our guys to. Vehicle and equipment maintenance, we're going to see a slight uptick in vehicle and equipment maintenance with the major component being on the equipment side. We have some equipment that's coming out of warranty, and just to ensure that we're doing the annual PMs correctly on those and making any, and having some money for repairs of those out-of-warranty expenses. And then we have an increase in our dispatching's fee. It's a slight increase, but we had a small increase in our call volume, and our dispatching fees are regulated by our call volume. All right, this next slide, I really want to talk a little bit about the future. So this was our proposed budget for this year, and those were the major changes. You got a chance to see our debt, and you got a chance to see what revenue we're projecting for this next year. These are some of the things that we're looking heavily at in the future. One first is a six-man per shift in 2019 to 2021. With the completion of PD-30 and PD-25, we're really going to start seeing those peak-time hours increase. If you remember last budget cycle, we, with your permission, we increased our minimum staffing from four to five during peak-time hours only. So our peak-time hours are between about 6 o'clock in the morning until 9 o'clock at night. So we're running a fifth guy every single day, whether we take a guy off on vacation or sick leave or anything, we're running a fifth guy utilizing either part-time personnel or overtime during those peak-time hours when most of our calls are happening, right? Now, at nighttime, we're dropping that down to four. What we know is with the addition of PD-25 and PD-30, we've got a couple of more entertainment establishments coming along that are going to push some of that a little bit later. We have a large apartment complex, we have some townhomes coming in, and we truly expect to see those peak-time hours start to creep past that 10 o'clock hour. It's very difficult to find part-time firefighters to come in at 6 o'clock in the morning and send them home at 1:00 AM. So when we start seeing those peak-time hours creep up that high, we're looking at the, really, the need, if we want to keep with that five-man minimum staffing, to increase our personnel to six, allowing us to have one guy off on vacation, one guy calling sick, or one guy being off for whatever reason in training, and still be able to hit that five-man minimum staffing without causing overtime. Currently, we use part-time staffing, as I said, to meet that. Part-time is doing a great job, and these guys are really hustling for us, and they're very knowledgeable people. We're only taking full-time firefighters from other departments, and they're doing a really good job for us. Right now, they're covering about 70% of all of our overtime need in Trophy Club. My goal, we've hired actually about three more firefighters, with my goal of we're covering about 80% of that overtime need with those part-time firefighters in this next year. You see an assistant or deputy chief there as well. We have a small staff, right? We have 15 firefighters on shift, we have an administrative assistant, and a lot of those administrative duties are being taken care of by shift personnel, right? So our three captains carry a heavy burden. We have a captain that's over EMS, I got a captain that's over training, I've got a captain that's over vehicle maintenance, right? Those are some pretty heavy burdens, these guys, and that are, they're having to take on those responsibilities along with making their shifts better, ensuring that their shifts are ready for calls, making sure that they're getting better as a team, right? And it's taken away some of those duties. The thing it's also doing for me is I'm trying to take on all of those duties when those guys are off. They work a 48/96 shift, so they might be there on a, if they work a Sunday/Monday, I won't see them again until that next Friday. So if, if I need something done in that area, then I'm picking that up, then Anita's picking that up, and we're trying to get those things done. By having assistant or deputy chief sometime in the future, then that will allow me to look a little bit further down the field and be able to prepare us better for what could occur in the future. Replacing engine 681 with a Quint in 2022, that's about a $1.3, $1.4 million cost. We have the Gatsby Fund, where we're setting aside some money for that. This really looks at our ISO rating. We could possibly, with some, this tweak and some others, is bring our ISO rating down, but until we have a second ladder in the, in our station to use when the first primary piece of equipment is out for servicing or being repaired, then we're required to wait and count the times off of the response from our neighbors for that first-in-ladder truck. With the number of structures that we have that are three stories and above, this hurts our ISO rating. So by having a second piece of equipment that has a ladder, that puts us one step closer to that, to that reduction in ISO rating, which means a reduction in your taxes. We're looking at tech, the tech replacement schedule. You're looking at about a $10,000 increase in 2020 and a $19,000 increase in 2025. Those are the projected, that's just part of our normal replacement program to replace computers when they need to be replaced, to replace all the hardware and software from year to year. In 2025, we're going to need to replace our SCBA units, and that's about $120,000. Those things are $10,000 a unit, and they're only good for 10 years. So once they pass that shelf life, you got to get rid of them, you can't utilize them on the first, first-line basis anymore, and that happens in 2025 for us. And then we have a radio replacement to begin in 2025 as well. That's a $20,000 cost for four consecutive years, so that's $20,000 each year for four years. Those are the large items that we foresee coming in the next five to 10 years. A lot of this is centered around that PD-30 and the increase in call volume, and trying to make sure that we're ready for that increase as it comes. Some of the future plans that we're looking at as well, is we're looking at a shared emergency manager with Roanoke, Westlake, and Trophy Club. We would really like to start seeing us work together as a unit with those three cities. Let's face it, if a tragedy happens here in Trophy Club, it's more than likely going to affect Roanoke, and it's going to affect Westlake as well. So we can all stand up our individual EOCs, and we can all be begging the state for the same resources, or we can work together as one big team, and we can prioritize where those resources need to go and make the best of those situations, right? That can best be done by having a central house that, or a central person that all of those emergency management needs for those three cities are under, right? The other thing that gives us is here in this Town and Trophy Club, we have six directors, right, and a town manager to help us run the EOC. Past that, we don't have deputy directors in a town this size, so the, the level of training for our people below the director level drops off pretty significantly. That's no different than Roanoke, it's no different than Westlake, they're in the exact same boat. If you talk to their fire chiefs, they're all worried about the same thing. Our bench is not deep enough, right? We can't get through more than one work cycle in the EOC with the personnel that we have. So who's coming to assist us, right? So this year, in the Town and Trophy Club, what we've done is we've gotten on the Denton County's emergency management plan. So with Denton County coming, they're pledging, hey, get through one work cycle, and we'll bring you some help, right? So we're going to get some help coming. But again, you're counting on people that don't know the area, you're counting on people that, that do a great job and understand the processes, but don't understand our individual needs of our towns. If we were to bring on Roanoke and Westlake together, then what you would see is each of these towns have three, or six directors, right, over these departments. Now I can have three work cycles, and we can probably get through a couple of days, and if something happens in Denton County along with this that puts their resources somewhere else, then we can hold this thing together for a good three or four, five days without any issues if we're working together with these other entities. That's one of the major things we'd really like to see get done over the next year to three years. One of the things we're just kind of looking at, just a short glimpse at, is the possibility of a shared station with Roanoke. We have a real tough time making decent response times to our far north end of town. We talked about this a little bit with the Loop Road. If the Loop Road was approved, it doesn't really help us a whole lot on those response times. We're still the same distance from each side of town. We would see an increase or decrease in our times if we're on one side of town and we have to go to the other, but response from the fire station would be virtually the same. We're running about 6 minutes, 45 seconds to 7 minutes from the fire station to our furthest north piece of town. That doesn't sound like a lot unless it's you that's needing that emergency response, right? If it's your house on fire, or your mother that's laying in the floor. So Roanoke, talking to Roanoke's new chief just briefly, they're may, they're having the same issues, right? They're having the same issues we're having, they're having a hard time making their response times to the north end of town as well. So just looking in the future, there could be a possibility that we could look at how that would work out best for both of our cities. I don't think either of us have the call volume or really the resources available to put another station in, but together we might. That's just a possibility. I'm also looking at the best practices accreditation and a reduction in our ISO rating like we talked about. I would not call for that ISO rating at least for another probably two years of rerating just because we don't have the right processes in place yet, we don't have the right equipment in place yet, we don't have those things that we need to get that reduction, and quite honestly, we could see an increase in our ISO rating if we were to have them here today. The Water Department, the MUD, does an outstanding job, and a large portion of our ISO rating is really how good our water system is beneath us, right? Do we have the water capabilities to put out a big fire in town or a hotel that's on fire, those kind of things. So we have a good, a good understanding there, but we need to shore up some of our other areas, in the areas of response time, in the area of equipment especially. So the Best Practices Accreditation for the State of Texas now has a Best Practices Accreditation that we can apply for. We're going to be looking at that right now. What I'm trying to do is get all of those processes, all of those policies in place, making sure that we're actually doing business that way, because we go after that accreditation, I could pencil-whip a couple of things, and we could have an accreditation, a feather in my cap, feather in y'all's cap, and we'd go on down the road. But I don't want a feather in my cap, I want us to be doing it. So we're going to make sure that over the next two years, we're training, we're getting these guys to the place where they're supposed to be, so that all I got to do is call the state and say, hey, come on in, let's do an evaluation of our unit, and they're going to take a, take a look at our policies and procedures that are in place, they're going to take a look at our guides, they're going to run us through some tests, and they're just going to check a box, yeah, they know what they're doing. So this is a longer process, but if, but I want to do it right, to just get the accreditation without actually having the structure in place to make sure that it's done, then the citizens don't really see anything but a plaque on the wall. Now, I want to see something more than that for our citizens. That concludes my presentation tonight. I'll take any questions that you might have on the budget.
So before we go to questions, just want to clarify for the MUD directors. The council has not seen this presentation, and the only thing that was presented to a budget committee. My assumption is that you saw most of this before as a MUD board, so I'm going to try to go to our people first, if you don't mind, if you've already seen that for questions, and then I'll turn it over to you, Greg, to see about things. So I had Eric raise his hand. Eric?
Yes, sir. Budget Subcommittee did not see this.
Right, they saw the budget only.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so before I get into the line items, question number one, what is our current ISO rating?
Our current ISO rating is a four.
That's not good.
No, sir.
And worse would be bad.
That's right.
So, thank you. Do you hire EMTs or paramedics?
Paramedics only.
Paramedics only. Would there be a benefit in hiring EMTs instead based on the type of calls that we make?
No, sir, because the majority of the calls that we make require a paramedic intervention.
But you always have a, but if you always had a paramedic there, because I assume every call you probably have four paramedics on call currently.
That's correct. That's correct. It becomes a scheduling nightmare, to be quite honest, because now if I have a paramedic off, my other two paramedics are officers, they, one's driving the truck, one's riding the seat of the truck, now who's going to ride that ambulance with that guy? So it, it really becomes a nightmare. You might could get away with one a shift, but the reality is with time off, with all those things, and as small as our department is, a department the size of Grapevine can get away with that, right? Because they can hide those guys into different areas. But a department our size, man, to be quite honest, you run a full arrest, I need every one of those guys to be a paramedic. There's no reason not to have somebody that can do an EKG, somebody else- There's no reason not to have somebody that can do an EKG, somebody else drawing up drugs, somebody else that's doing an airway, and all of those are advanced certification needs.
Thank you, sir. So let me get into the the budget line item. First I wanna ask about is on the town revenue. Sixty-five thousand dollars for fire permit, sprinkler, plan review. I'm assuming this is PD thirty related.
That's correct.
But as I recall, the town budget has not included any PD thirty in our budget, so why are we including it in the fire budget? That's kind of a question for John.
So as you can see, this is a large increase to expenditures and because.
Revenue.
Yeah, sorry. Well, we have a large increase to expenditures, which means we have to generate more revenue to do this. And so in talking with them and how much money was needed and how this was gonna hit each of the rates, it was decided that if we can start showing some of this revenue, it will help provide a little bit of tax relief. And so it was, this money is not for sure yet, but it is money that we know we're gonna get above and beyond this amount. And so we were hesitant to put it in there, but we've had more plan reviews, we've had a little bit more information, and so we felt more comfortable when they asked us, is there any way that we can start putting PD thirty revenue in there, and they gave us a specific amount. We were comfortable with this number and showing that this was not only conservative but accurate, or that we can receive at least.
Am I correct, though, that the town is not forecasting any PD thirty revenue in our FY nineteen budget?
Yes, currently there is not, but after we approve the budget tonight, it will be included in there, that's sixty thousand dollars, and so we'll update ours to match this.
Councilmember Jensen, the other reason that the town was hesitant to to add in any kind of revenue from PD thirty, number one, the the fire revenue, it's a significant amount. There's a significant amount on the town side as well under billing services. But the timing of this is is pretty crucial. So there's there's a possibility that that permitting could happen in September. There's a possibility that permitting could happen in October, right? So there's processes available to take money that's gained from that in September and push it to the October, to the next fiscal year's budget. It becomes a pain, to be quite honest.
And you're saying September of twenty nineteen, that's September of twenty eighteen?
No, I'm saying September of twenty eighteen.
That we could be issuing fire permits September twenty eighteen?
Now, it's not finals. You have to understand the majority of fire permits coming off pan review. Yes, sir.
Interesting. Thank you, sir. All right, so a few more things. You did answer a few of my my bullet points. I've had questions about. One of the things, the who this report, there's one thing I found an error on. And so the medical insurance on this report says eighty-five thousand, but on the online reports set for of FY eighteen said sixty-seven thousand. So I don't sure if there's any other errors in this paper report. So whoever did that, if y'all could just review that, please. So. See what I'm saying?
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, so the yeah, on on this report, it says FY eighteen is eighty-five thousand, and FY nineteen is also eighty-five thousand, so I was like, whoa, that's odd. So then my question is, though, you did state that there's a fifteen percent increase. What if it's more? Where does the money come from?
Fifteen per we. Good evening, council directors. We've actually put in fifteen percent as a highly conservative estimate. I should have those numbers back to council. I'm hoping next week is what that picture's gonna look like, but we were just told that that number's gonna be lower than the fifteen percent, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so we're in a good position.
Okay. If you're comfortable with that with.
Yeah, so I wouldn't say it if I wasn't comfortable.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jonathan. You answered my question on software, a big jump in building maintenance.
Yes, sir.
From sixteen thousand to ninety-three, so what's that?
So that ninety-three includes the the reclamation system for the exhaust.
Thank you, sir.
That includes that seventy-five thousand for that. That should have been a flat wash other than.
You did go down in two areas. I'm shocked. Communications went from thirteen down to nine, communications and mobile. So I assume maybe in FY eighteen, we bought some radios.
Yes, sir.
What and there's some things that you not.
That's through our IS budget and pastor runs through all that.
Perfect. And the next thing is water. So you're gonna spend less than water in nineteen.
I got thirsty guys.
Spending less than water, so how is?
I got thirsty guys over there. I'm I'm turning the taps off. We're not we're not buying any water. No, I'm just kidding. No, that's that's through the estimates that John threw out this last year, just looking at our.
On usage? So the rate's not going down?
No, the rate's not going down, yeah. Total usage, we we expect actually, when I looked, it basically their budget number last year was a little high compared to their usages. And so it was high enough that I felt that we could keep their number flat and still be enough with how they're trending in billing now, so.
Okay, cool. All right, just a few more. Sorry.
Yes, sir.
You answered my question on schools and training, travel per diem, okay? Fuel, again, same with water, fuel is flat, so you're not ex again, the town budget, you're showing an increase, but we're showing a flat here with with the fire, so why is fuel expenses flat compared to what we did with the town? I'm sorry, John, I'm just I assume y'all work together on this, so.
Yeah, no. So fuel expenses, so again, that's based on usage. So whenever we rejected out last year, it's usage times by cost. And so each year he get or each month, he actually gets a fuel report. He evaluated total number of gallons that he's using, and based on those total number of gallons estimating for next year, here based the time rate, we estimate that's exactly what the budget will be.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, one more item, small tools and equipment, a huge jump. I assume that was one of the bullet points that you touched on then.
Yes, sir. We have several pieces of equipment that are coming out of warranty.
Right.
And really, that's gonna cause us to need to bring into the budget a s a annual service agreement to to offset that cost.
Thank you, chief. Anything else, Eric?
No, sir.
All right, so we got three other speakers, myself, then Greg, then Philip. My question's dealt with, it was mentioned the Gatsby Fund's being set aside to replace six eighty-one. And so is that a town item or a MUD item?
That is a MUD item.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then the other thing that where you talked about in the future, I think some radio expense.
Yes, sir.
I noticed in the last big house fire that we had, we had quite some communication issues of frequencies or radios not being compatible between the people offering help. Is this gonna solve that in any way as you replace radios or not?
Somewhat. So the new radios that we can purchase now are dual band. So we have the ability to talk to all of our neighbors. We're currently, some of our Flower Mound and some of the other neighbors, we have a little more difficult time talking to them because we don't have the second band in our radios. This is a this honestly, it these radios, they're good for us. It's it's a lifespan use is real what this really is. The newer radios are a little a little better. The antennas are a little better on them, those kind of things. We're getting a little bit better reception. What's gonna help us more in the areas that you speak of is that we're now, within our radio programming, we have some new channels that we've added that were were actually added those last year. But we have these interoperative radios, interoperative channels, where everybody in the state of Texas can move to those interoperable channels, and now we can all talk no matter what. So if we're having difficulties on a scene, all I have to do is tell everybody to change over to one of these interoperability channels for the state of Texas. Everybody's got them in their radio. They just gotta find it, and then we can talk without any problems.
All right, thank you. So Greg, you wanted to speak in it, Philip?
The ladder truck, is that a second ladder truck or is replacing a standard or is it an additional truck?
So engine six eighty-one is an engine, right? So it doesn't have a ladder on top. We would be replacing that engine with another ladder truck or Quint, yes, sir, that has a ladder on top.
Somehow in the back of my mind, that the ladder truck couldn't get down certain streets, it couldn't navigate certain streets in the town. Maybe I'm wrong on that, but somehow I recall that comment.
So what what we're looking at replacing the engine with is a single rear axle Quint. So they didn't have those actually in twenty fifteen. This is a newer technology that's come out just in the last couple of years. We can now can get a hundred foot aerial, a hundred and seven foot actually aerial ladder on a single rear axle, which will cut down on the overall length of the truck, which will help us in those areas, will also help us a ton in vehicle maintenance. So that back axle on the fire truck, when you turn a corner, that thing's called a drag axle, and you can just see it leaving rubber on the ground. We're replacing tires on that truck, the back axle tires on that truck about three times a year. Each one of those tires is a little over eight hundred dollars. So we're gonna see a definite decrease in that. It also lightens that axle load from eighty-four thousand pounds down to fifty thousand total vehicular weight. So we should see a lessening in in vehicle maintenance due to that as well, just the wear and tear on that vehicle.
No, I understand the maintenance, but I'm talking about navigating the streets.
So navigating the streets, it will be shorter, so it will be a little bit better at navigating the streets than we are currently. We don't have any streets we can't get down unless they're double parked on both sides of the street. If we have parking on both sides of the street, some of the times we have to move those vehicles in order to get down. But as far as making corners, those kind of things, sometimes it's a little tough, but the guys can get it done.
So I recall being at a MUD meeting when the number twenty-four percent was thrown out as far as an increase. I'll defer to the MUD on that if that's still being discussed. Have we plans and for water, obviously, for.
Oh, for water.
Have we made any adjustments and are we aware of that of or what increases have you allotted for this budget?
For the water itself?
Thirty percent. Currently, we have thirty percent. I believe the last time they talked to us, thirty-four percent. I still feel comfortable overall with the usage and how I forecasted it, using the mathematic method I did. I I still think that there's it'll be close, but it's not gonna, I don't believe it's gonna be over.
Our utilities were very conservative in their estimation, so we should be under the underneath those numbers.
Greg, anything else? Philip?
Yeah, just let me make one correction, one small correction. Our ISO rating is a three, Eric, not a four.
Thank you.
The the and and on your line item, talking about water, you actually have twenty percent. I don't know if if you've changed that and it's, you know, and not updated that, but.
You know, my apologies, it may be twenty percent. I'm trying off the top of my head. I have to look at it. I apologize for that.
One question I had is, I'm I was surprised that you didn't have anything in the actual budget for radios. I know that Eric talked about communication, pagers, and mobiles, but in this year's budget, there was nothing set aside for radios, but we spent almost fifteen hundred for radios. We have a there's a line item that popped up in probably maybe April, where we spent fifteen hundred in radios.
Yes, sir. If you that actually is getting recoded to a different line. Radios, we have a radios line on the town side. We do not have a radios line on the MUD side. Radios are paid within the small equipment line item on the. If you look at that line, you'll see three thousand dollars for radios.
Okay, I'll I'll talk. I'm gonna pull that off consent because I have some some things, issues I wanna talk about on that. And then flags, I I noticed that in the line item that you sent today, that I I wasn't aware that that's a three-year contract.
Yes, sir.
And there's no money in out years, but yet this year we have money set aside. We haven't spent anything, but we have money set aside. So I would assume that that's something we we still put money in, even though in those out years, in the in the line item that we have, it shows no money in those out years.
Yeah, you won't see it in the budget again until that three-year time period is up. Now, whether or not we have it in the we use reserves or we use it somewhere else. If you look at that three-year time period, this contract is cheaper than paying it annually for the flag maintenance and repairs that we have.
So that's so that's the question I had. This year, we had five thousand set aside. So if you look at what you have in the packet under flags and materials, or it's thirty-five hundred, I'm sorry. So I was kinda surprised that we had it this year, but not in those out years. Is that just something you've changed or?
Yes, sir. It's just going to a three-year contract that covers all the requirements that we have for flags, repair, and then rather than paying for it on an annual basis.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Tim?
Please excuse me because I'm a layman. Can you tell me what you consider the good a good ISO rating? And timeframes on when we're gonna get there, and then what we consider our best practice standards and when we're gonna get there?
No. The long the long story of it.
I mean, over time, I don't want the answers right now, but I'd like to know where we should be.
I would hate to project a win, right? I I could tell you where I would like us to be.
We're gonna get there, yes.
I would love to see us at an ISO of two. An ISO of one, we would be, we need some training facilities, we need things that we wouldn't be able to ever have here in Trophy Club. But an ISO rating of two, I think, is a possibility. We would be getting it by the skin of our teeth, but I think we could.
Is that a three-year timeline? Is it a year? Is it five years?
I would say three, three to four years.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We need PD thirty to come on, and we need to start seeing the tax revenue from that, and increase some staffing, that kind of thing, so. Yes, sir.
Ryland?
Yes, sir. This is more for John. So we had our slide about future expenses. Is this something you guys are gonna be able to look at and start to program into some of the capital replacement stuff we've started looking at? This is even though it's a little bit more complicated because we're collaborating with the MUD district, obviously.
So yes, we can start putting this in oh-one-two-five-six or oh-seven-two-five-six and basically build them a capital replacement plan, so it's a part of depreciation.
Cool. And for chief, your SCBA units, you mentioned that you'd have that you'd be ready for full replacement at a certain date in the future.
Twenty twenty-five.
Is there a is there any advantage from your perspective to where you could start to stagger that out as opposed to one hit it once? Or are we in a situation where everything's all the?
We bought all new SCBAs when we bought the truck in twenty fifteen, so they're all gonna go out of date at the same time. It doesn't mean that we can't replace some a year out, maybe two years out at the most. I wouldn't go more than two years.
Right.
Because you're getting rid of equipment that still has a useful life.
Yeah, I agree.
Those things don't bring much in the auction.
I would just encourage looking at some way there to to try and stretch that a little bit, and so that maybe over time, over a couple of cycles of equipment, we can start to.
It'll be necessary just to keep us under the tax rate that we need to be.
Sure, yeah. And I thought I had one other thought, but one of you guys may have already answered it for me, so it must not be that important. Thanks, guys.
Alicia, do you have anything?
No.
All right, so we've kinda gone through council questions. Greg, I'll turn the meeting over to you and see if your people have any questions about this area.
Okay. Are there any questions on the MUD side? We'll start on the left. Bill, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. On the mandatory FSLA.
Yes, sir.
That was not included in wages and salaries before?
Like I said, it was it was all included in the overtime wages before. It was just never separated out. So I couldn't really see how much of that budget was being paid out for FLSA and how much was being paid for operational overtime. And we were busting our overtime budget year after year after year. The question is is why are we busting that budget? So now we we've dialed in and we know exactly what that budget needs to be in order to have operations where they need to be.
Okay, I have several, a couple or three documents here that said the overtime is proposed at seventy-three thousand, six eighty-eight, and I believe in your briefing, you said a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so the hundred and fifty thousand is the is the rough twice amount, right? So that's the town and the MUD side together. So the the seventy-three, it's it's like one forty, one forty-six and some change is what the actual total is. So the MUD, the MUD would provide seventy-three thousand or seventy seventy-three thousand six, and then the town would supply the other seventy-three.
Okay, I was looking, trying to find town expenses for the for the employees on this document. I have MUD expenses. Under MUD expenses, I don't have any employee expenses. I know that the agreement states that we will pay fifty percent.
Yes, sir.
So.
Fifty percent of that is in there. Yes, Carmen?
If I could just interject, I think the column heading where it said expenses dash town on the front page of this should be for both the town and the MUD. That's half of it's half of the employee costs.
So those all all those all those numbers are fifty percent factors.
Yes, sir. I think it's a label. It's a labeling challenge at the top of that column.
Okay. I do have a question on the new employee doing fire permits.
Yes, sir.
I believe you said, did you say something like a hundred and ninety thousand income?
That's a very rough estimate. We looked at the square footage. That that revenue is generated by square footage. That's calculation done by square footage. So in that hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar square footage, I looked at the bottom floor of every single unit. Those apartment complexes are more than one story, right? But a builder could come in at any time and say that three-story building is now gonna be a two-story building, right? So what I don't want is to overestimate that, and we try to use those revenues to decrease the tax, and then suddenly we're not, we don't have that revenue coming in, right?
Okay, so let me ask you a question about that.
Yes, sir.
If those revenues, I believe, are currently shown, would go to the town. Would that be correct?
The town collects it. That's correct.
Okay, so does the MUD receive fifty percent credit for those because we pay fifty percent of the cost?
You will receive one hundred percent credit because it's a. You will receive one hundred percent credit because it's a fire tax.
Okay.
So, that happens in the true-up at the end of the year.
So, it's a tax as opposed to a fee?
No, it's a fee for the, it's a fee for the service, but because it is a fire fee, then it would be returned to the mud, who takes care of the fire budget through the fire tax.
Okay.
And the towns portion comes back via assessment of the PIB?
That's correct.
To those residents.
Any other questions?
No.
Ask for someone else. Director Chapman, any questions?
No questions.
Director Flynn?
We, um, it looked like this year's, next year's proposed budget is, I think we said twenty-five, twenty-six percent increase in this year. Is that ballpark-
This year's budget from last year's, yes.
Correct.
Yes.
So, as you look at the, uh, future expenses, there's some pretty aggressive things that we're requesting. Is there any way to ballpark, are we talking thirty percent increases for the next three, four years, or is it too far out and?
It, it's really too far out to project, um, because those prices are gonna change, right? I could give you a ballpark. I've, I've actually, within M-budget, we have some figures laid out for, um, out to five years, um, out years that we could, we could give you. Um, but again, they'd be very, very rough, very rough estimates. And how much of that is actually, we decide, you know, we're gonna go in a completely different direction and we're not gonna fund that at all, you know?
Okay, thank you.
I had a question, um, this, uh, one question for you then, one question for, uh, Stephen. When the guys went down for Harvey, uh, typically, there's reimbursement that comes back either from FEMA or any number of entities. Uh, one, I'm assuming it's probably too soon for the town to have seen any of that. Uh, but when that does come in, is that also something that's handled during the true-up?
Yes, sir. So, we actually have seen some of that come back. So, uh, we went down as part of the TIFMS response, which TIFMS is our mutual aid agreement basically with the state. So, we sent our guys down there. We actually billed TIFMS for our hours worked, our vehicles that were down there, all those things. Uh, we received around a forty-six, forty-seven percent of that reimbursement back. Uh, last Friday, actually, we received four questions on the remaining percentage of that reimbursement. So, we, uh, expect to see the remainder of that reimbursement come within the next probably thirty days.
Okay. We don't, do we expect to see anything come back in twenty-nineteen?
Not in twenty-nineteen for the TIFMS response. That should all be paid for this year for Harvey. Now, if we were to go again, then we would see that again.
So, all-
But what you're gonna see with that is a lot of the, the overtime costs from this year were generated, right, through that. So, we're really just paying ourselves back. So, a lot of the overtime issue that we're having this year, we're actually gonna get, a lot of that money is gonna you use to pay for that overtime overage this year. Um, and then, if there's any left, then it would, it would be split because it's a personnel cost between the town and the mud.
Okay. And we're not expecting any other reimbursement from any other sources as a result of those efforts?
As a result, result of those efforts, no, sir. Uh, we have applied for several grants, um, but really, there's no way of knowing. There, it's early in the process and we don't really know exactly what those, uh, will entail.
Okay. And, and, and don't take that line of question to believe that we do not support that effort and, I pray to God, we never need to, but if we ever needed to, we definitely support, at least I would support, having them go back and participate.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my question would be to Stephen. So, if we, what would be the impact of the fire tax rate, uh, if we were to adopt this budget? Uh, is it with the increase in valuations, let's, help me understand that. How much of this increase would that be able to absorb? Are we, will we have to consider a increase in the fire tax to cover the full amount of this increase?
Yes, to cover this, uh, fire tax here, the rate will go up, um, based on what projections we have here. Uh, we just got certified numbers as of yesterday from Denton. Um, so based on the numbers here, the fire tax will go up. And the overall, you know, we do a blended rate when it comes to the overall rate, um, it will affect our rate coming up to the rollback rate that we can do.
How much?
Right now, projecting with everything I have here, and this is all preliminary numbers that I have for our end, uh, we will be over the rollback rate from what I have here without raising any, anything else now.
Go ahead and state the fire tax rate impact.
The fire tax rate right now for last year was, uh, point zero six eight seven. It will now increase to point zero seven two two nine.
Which we looked at, um, Stephen and I looked together on that and John as well, on the average household of four hundred thousand dollars in the town Trophy Club. That would be around a fifteen dollar per year increase in taxes.
Correct. You said it would go from zero six eight seven to zero seven two nine?
Zero seven two two nine.
Two two nine?
Correct. Okay, those were all of, uh, my questions.
Alright, uh, then, uh, procedurally wise, neither one of us have our full budget before us, although we're agenda to take action. I'm unclear as to what you really expected us to do here other than ask our questions. Do you want a motion that we agree with these numbers, but we're gonna really vote on them at a later date? So, what's your thinking there?
I'm sure I'm wrong, but I think the contractual agreement says that we will approve a fire budget by tonight. But not a, not adopt. So, adoption and approval are two different things.
Okay. Alright, so then it would be appropriate, uh, to make a motion to approve the proposed, uh, budget for the town. Uh, Greg, did you want that for the floor or were you trying to ask a question?
No, I'm making for the floor.
Alright.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Fire Protection Service for Services fiscal year twenty-nineteen budget as presented at the dais.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright. Uh, second by Schaffner. Any discussion, counsel? Staff, any comments? Alright. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the Fire Protection Services budget for twenty-nineteen, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign, it is unanimous. This time, I will turn the chair back over to President Wilson.
Okay, we have a item to consider and take appropriate action regarding the Fire Protection Services fiscal year twenty-nineteen budget. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, budget for Fire Protection Services fiscal year twenty-nineteen.
We have a motion by Director Chapman to approve the Fire Protection Services fiscal year twenty-nineteen budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Secretary of Treasury Flynn. Any discussion?
I have another-
Vice President Rose?
Yeah, looking at funding on this, uh, this building maintenance item of seventy-five thousand dollars for the exhaust fan, I remember that discussion and wondered about the original decision. Having said that, can we, we have a reserve right now in, uh, let me get the last budget. We had a reserve showing, uh, at the June of an unassigned fund balance of five twenty-two, two fifty-three. I imagine part of that's Gatsby for the, uh, engine ladder replacement. But is there any of that money that would be available to, uh, repair that exhaust fan?
There is some, there's some money in there. We do have a payment in September that's gonna come across too. So, some of that's going to be the payment we collect for, um, but we will have some money in there. I think three hundred, that is, for as a Gatsby. I'll have to do the calculation on it, but it's around three hundred thousand, which would be the Gatsby fifty-four.
So, there's a possibility we could fund part of that out of this?
Correct.
And not do the tax rate as much, as I understand it. Would that be correct?
That'd be correct.
So, our total delta of increase, what was it for the mud? Year over year?
The last year's budget, now granted, this is, there's some differences in our budget on what they're showing on their budget. Based on, we, when we adopted the budget, we didn't change our numbers. Um, so what you see on fiscal year eighteen there for the budgets what we had, uh, we went from needing one point five five one to this year needing one point eight one five.
General Manager Carmen, do you have a comment?
Just that, um, the Gatsby fund was really intended to be a sinking fund for the replacement of the fire truck. And while there has been, uh, past practice of dipping into it for other maintenance reasons, it feels like it lacks fiduciary responsibility to me. Um, so I think we gotta reserve that fund for replacement of the fire truck and address this issue, um, head-on. For example, we, if we just budgeted for more revenue from PD thirty, uh, we could avoid the tax increase realistically. So, we kinda went through that process with, um, with the town. You know, they're, they're not unlike the mud in that sense. We tend to be overly conservative in our budgeting of revenues. And we tend to have our eyes bigger than our plate in terms of what we budget to spend and often don't have the staff capacity to actually spend our whole budget. So, you know, realistically, we're, these are projections, a budget is a guideline for what's gonna happen next year. We can't know really what's gonna happen next year. We, we didn't know when this budget process went through last year that Houston would have the disaster that it had. Um, so, at least for me, I, um, I'm kind of a stickler for, for creating a sinking fund for equipment replacement, that we stick to that. And not try to, even though we've done it in the past, um, divert money from that fund to, uh, roof repairs or other building maintenance, uh, items that it was not originally intended for.
The interesting thing is, under the agreement between the mud and the town, that, uh, we're required to, uh, do the revenue generation through an annual fire tax. So, I was just trying to see if there's a way to buy that fire tax down.
Oh, I definitely understand.
Yeah.
What, to his point, what percentage or how much of the, how much of the cost, uh, is leading to that increase in the fire tax? So, if the budget amount, if the budget would have, how much of a reduction would it take for us to assume, for us to leave the fire tax at its current rate?
If the fire tax stays at its current rate, you're looking at about one fifty-five.
So, it's-
Pretty close to that.
A hundred and fifty K.
Now, you understand that the valuations have gone up, which makes the rates naturally, you wouldn't want to reduce the rates because the values have gone up. You're trying to keep the same revenue across the board in a way, looking at it. Because the rollback rate's gonna go off of the calculation for what the evaluation was prior to, prior year for ONM for INS. And our ONM obviously being a blend with our rollback rate being a blend with the fire. So, we'd actually have to reduce the fire, reduce our INS or ONM to keep our rate under the rollback rate.
Okay, that was, uh, my question. Any other questions?
So, I want to be clear. The rollback rate is a total, is an amount on our total tax rate? The combination of all of the individual taxes that we calculate.
That's correct.
It's not calculated on an individual one, for example, of fire tax.
That's correct.
Okay.
Are there any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor of approving the Fire Protection Services fiscal year twenty-nineteen budget indicate by raising your hand. Motion passed unanimously. Seeing none, that opposes the motion? Join your side first.
Alright, uh, I think that concludes our joint meeting agenda. And so, again, I'll turn the meeting back to President Wilson, who may want to adjourn his meeting.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Trophy Club mud.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Second by Director, uh, Secretary of Treasury Flynn. All in favor? Motion passes. Uh, the Trophy Club mud will adjourn at seven thirty-five PM.
Uh, counsel, I'm going to adjourn our joint meeting, and in a few minutes, we'll then call to order our individual's regular meeting. So, we stand in the joint meeting adjourned for five minutes.